...evening. This meeting is now called to order. Roll call on behalf of Madam D. Jones. Unfortunately, she will not be in attendance tonight. On her behalf will be Deputy Clerk Melendra Emery. And on that, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Trustee Karen Lewis. Trustee McFattan.
Present.
Trustee Foulcher. Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Mayor Rudes.
I'm here. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance. For the record, Trustee Foulcher is here. Thank you. And hey, Trustee, all right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any comments regarding this special meeting agenda? If not, the items on the special meeting agenda are two simple things. (mumbling) Okay, special meeting, sorry. Un momento, good people, un momento. Give me one minute. Yes, ma'am. I'm ready, sister. For the, for, for the record, Trustee Williams, make sure we talk into the microphone, good people? Absolutely. Okay, so, to my understanding, I need a motion to remove two things off, I mean, one thing. Is that the Civic System Accounting software? Not, not right now. I think there's some hiccups or some unfinished business that they haven't completed. So I need a motion moved by Lewis, second by Brooks. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Trustee.
Yes, madam.
F1A, yes. Trustee Lewis. Trustee McFattan.
Vote aye.
Trustee Foulcher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudes.
Uh, vote aye, Madam Clerk. Also, item F1C, I'd like to make a motion to table that to the regular meeting with someone who'll be here from GSU. Moved by Brooks, second by Thompson. Roll call, clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Lewis, I said Lewis, I'm sorry. Y'all don't look alike, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, y'all don't look alike, I'm sorry, for the record.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee McFattan. Trustee Foulcher.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudes.
And vote aye. Thank you so much. Item F1B, first, second, and third reading ordinance authorizing approval of a lease agreement between the Village of University Park and MMA International, Inc., regarding unit number thirty, Town Center Drive, for a Harold's Chicken. Is there a motion?
Question.
Question.
Well, give me a motion by McFattan. Who got me a second?
Second.
Second by Lewis. Question by Thompson.
Do we, do we have like the insurance documents and the franchise documents and what, all the documents that we need to see?
No, I'm still, I need the franchise documents. I also need the proof of insurance, which they can't get until the lease is effectuated because they can't go to the insurance company to, to get lease, to get the insurance. But it, it will be for eight hundred and fifty dollars a month, and it's a twelve-year lease, and it's the standard, I mean, a twelve-month, I'm sorry, twelve-month lease at eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. I did speak with the gentleman regarding that, and he agreed to those terms.
She answered my question about that.
Any, any other questions?
So the insurance, you said that they can't get the insurance, they should have the insurance, they just can't get us on as a, as a holder, but do they have the insurance now?
Well, they have insurance from their other business, but they won't put them on this until they can show the insurance company, you know, their lease agreement. Yeah, we don't have the lease until this.
For the, right, but they have shown insurance from the previous, for the company business insurance?
No, not from, not from the one on Stony, no.
So you don't have any business insurance information?
No.
Before the, Madam, Mad, Mad, uh, Manager, before them doors open up and one customer steps in the door, everything will be in place, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, that's all I need to know. Any other questions, guys? I'm sorry, Don, I didn't mean to cut you off. You got anything else?
No, that was it. It's just, we was, we've got to make sure we have some insurance before anybody come in.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, did we not approve when we first went over the initial of how the lease should be, that there was like close to a three million dollar that had to be bonded or something? I can't, my memory a little foggy, getting old. But I know we, we did make it that it was mandatory that everybody that comes in here, when they sign this lease, that they had to get insurance, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's what I thought. I think it's like three.
Three million.
Okay. Second page, okay. Yeah, I knew that was one of the discussions we had in the past, and I believe that we made that standard from here out. You're my time.
Just one quick question. What was the, what is the hours of operation, that's all?
I'm not sure of the exact hours. At one point, he discussed staying open till midnight or a little later to service the students at GSU.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I said her, like, weekend hours might be different, yeah. All right. Any other questions, guys? If not, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee McFattan.
Vote aye.
Trustee Foulcher.
Um, I am staying to, I see insurance information and franchise information. Well, votes no.
Understood.
I vote no.
Trustee Thompson.
Votes no for the same reason as Trustee Foulcher.
Trustee Williams.
Vote yes.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudes.
Welcome to University Park Hell's Chicken. Mayor, vote aye. All right. General public comments. Song, Songa Jenkins?
Okay, good, good evening, Mayor Boy. We're excited about our Hell's Chicken. It's gonna anchor our town center, and once that comes, we can see it just grow, grow, grow. And thank you, Chris, for all of the hard work that you've been doing on our streets. Be prepared tonight. I gotta leave out at four o'clock in the morning, going to pick my son up. So I just wanted to thank you guys for everything that you're doing. And also, I'm very, very excited about Harold's Chicken Shack extremely because it's gonna make a big difference in the town center when it comes down to traffic and enticing other businesses to join them. So just keep doing what you're doing, and also, don't forget, voting is coming up, seniors vote. The retirees thing has not come to pass yet. I think the expiration date, if I'm not gonna be corrected, is February twenty-eighth. We need to do a good thing to our seniors. We need to respect them, and if not, you know they vote, and they will exercise their right, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion for adjournment? Oh, no, no, I didn't see your name, but I didn't, okay. Your name is, is that what's on there? Golly, I gotta take the glasses off to read that. I'm so, so apologetic, I'm sorry. I thought someone was just trying to see if they, I thought someone was trying to see if their pen was right.
Hi, my name's Capri Adams. On behalf of Harold's Chicken, and I just wanted to address the issues. While we didn't, you can't get the insurance or anything like that because we wasn't even sure that it was gonna pass, because the last week, it didn't pass, so before we could move forward with the things that would, would be needed to move forward, we would have to know that you guys were gonna pass the motion for the Harold's Chicken. So all the things that you guys are needed, so, it's so easy to attain because we have another Harold's Chicken, so it's just adding another business. And so, I just wanted to say thank you guys all that who voted, and, and just thank you for your support, thank you for your love, your prayers, and I am super duper excited. So thank you, University Park. It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn after special meeting? We'll come right back at seven, eight, seven PM sharp.
Some move.
Moved by Thompson, second by Lewis. All in favor? Opposed? Same sign? None? Posed? All right, we got a few, ten minutes, guys, and there's gonna be some things off that other.
This meeting is now called to order. Uh, this, this is the regular meeting of the cow. Uh, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee McFatten.
Present.
Trustee Foulter.
Present.
Trustee Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Mayor Rudez.
I, here. We're gonna stand for the pledge allegiance one more time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Item five one A, Mr. Amerabali. Wanna go to the microphone, please, sir?
Yes.
Thank you so much, yeah. Looks like we even has a brand new microphone, too. It does, look, yeah.
Fancy, huh?
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm gonna go relatively quick over this since I went more in depth last time around. But if anyone has questions as I go, please just stop me mid-sentence. Okay, so you guys should all have your financials in front of you. So as we talked last time, page one is all your governmental funds, the balance sheet for all of them consolidated. Page two is your profit and loss for all of your governmental funds consolidated. So for your general fund, you guys had total revenues of seventeen point two million, with expenditures of ten point three millions, for a surplus of six point eight million. Your special revenue funds were revenues of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, with expenses of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, with a surplus of two hundred and twelve thousand. Your capital project fund, which is primarily your TIF funds, had revenues of twelve point eight million, with expenses of five hundred thousand, for a surplus of twelve point three million. Page three is just your general fund, a balance sheet. So we have total assets of thirty-two point seven million, with liabilities of thirty-four point eight million, uh, deferrals of five point three, and then a negative fund balance of seven point four million. Compared to the previous year, we had twenty-seven point three million in assets as of November thirtieth, with liabilities of thirty-three point three million, uh, deferral of five point three, and a negative fund balance of eleven point four million. Page four is your, page four through twelve is your guys' profit and loss for the general fund. I'm gonna do a high level on that, not go as in-depth unless anyone has questions for me, and then I'll go in more in-depth. We had, um, the revenues, we had fourteen point four million in tax revenue, compared to the prior year of nine point two million. Our budgeted revenue was fifteen point four, so we've almost got our entire budgeted revenue for taxes. As a reminder, within our tax revenue is the increase that the village included to absorb the TIF five levy, which you're not going to receive that this fiscal year, but it's still included in your budgeted amount. So even with that three point six excluded, we're at ninety-three percent of our budget. Yeah, so in the prior year, we had nine point two million, which is in the far right column. Then the second from, the third from the far right column is your guys' budget, which in that is three point six million. So if we exclude three point six million that we're not going to actually receive this year, we've exceeded what we budgeted for revenue purposes, for just in taxes. Make sense to everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Then the other ones, any? Yes, there was the majority as to why we've pretty much exceeded budget. It's due to that, 'cause we got four point two million in sales tax money that we didn't include in, uh, when we did the budget this year. It was that we didn't know if that was gonna be a consistently you guys are gonna get that, or if that was just a one-off type of situation. We are working, we did send in the information to the state, so I'm expecting, hopefully by next meeting, we'll have a, in general, answer that we can provide as to where did we got that four million dollars from.
That's a surplus.
So Chris.
Uh-huh.
On page three.
Yep.
You have twenty million, ninety-five dollar, nine hundred, ten cents due from other funds. So should that have been added to the total assets?
Well, it's-
But you haven't received it yet, correct?
Well, see, that is inter-fund borrowing that happened in previous years, so you'll notice, so you have twenty million that were, that is owed from other funds to the general fund, and then, um, if you scroll down a little bit, where it says due to other funds, there's thirty-four million that's owed to other funds. Now, a lot of that, in my opinion, we'll have to confirm it, but I do think that's bad accounting from years and years back, that it has to be closed out, so to speak. I will intend, uh, my plan is a lot of those due to inter-funds, I do intend on recommending the village wipe out those balances. Once we have a full reconciliation, my recommendation is going to be that a lot of those balances that are for funds that it was partially bad accounting and partially things that will never be repaid, the village through board action wipe those balances out, because in my opinion, they're uncollectible, receivable, payables, and proper accounting is anything that is not collectible from a receivable or payable standpoint, standpoint is eliminated, it's written off.
So how about back we talk?
Uh, I'm thinking at least, um, 'cause a large, for TIF five is a large portion of the balance.
There you go.
So I'm thinking it's at least twenty years.
So you're gonna go back twenty years?
If, if, if your guys' software supports it and we can get the numbers, yes.
I was just born twenty years ago.
If we can get that, yes. Because it's gonna impact the overall closure and transfer of TIF five cash.
Okay, so if you go back, uh, however many years it is, and do this audit, and see where money went some places it was not supposed to go, and then, what, take that money out of this TIF five that dissolved?
Well, my thought is that, so what I think happened is twenty years ago-
No, that wasn't the question. So you're gonna go back and do the audit, and you're gonna find out where, how this money got wherever it went. And then you're gonna be, gonna get that, recoup that money, and be out of the TIF five funds. And then what about the other taxing lines?
So what I, okay, so I'm gonna split that into two questions. So the TIF five portion, what I think happened with TIF five is you guys paid out vendor A, B, and C, but from an accounting standpoint, which what the village did back then was, they recorded the expense in the general fund, and then transferred the cash out of the TIF into the general fund, doubling up the tran, the transaction, instead of recording it as expense in the TIF five, and then a cash into the general fund for the check that was cut out of the debt. That's what I think, what I think happened was the expense was recorded in TIF five, or in the general fund, and then the cash was taken out of the TIF bank account into the general fund, doubling that effect. That's what I think happened. That's what we're going to go back and see if that's what you guys did way back when, and then what will end up happening is bad accounting. I think that's what happened. Until we actually get through it all to confirm, I can't say for sure, but my thought is that's what happened because, based on just analytical of the cash balance and how much you guys got from TIF five, and then how much you guys reimbursed, because under your guys' TIF agreement, you guys had to pay back seventy-five percent of the money. Uh, only one of your guys is developing.
One year, okay.
Yeah. The majority were all TIF, the majority of all of the other ones were seventy-five percent, you guys had to pay back. I act, I, I don't know, 'cause I, it's a little, but I think there was a lot of TIF eligible expenses that were paid out of the general fund, that TIF five cash was used to fund, but it was never actually charged to TIF five. That's what my thought is, until we actually look through it to confirm, but that's what I think happened. Because it just doesn't seem realistic that you guys have that large of an inter-fund borrowing, because if you guys would've collected, let's say, ten million a year, you had to pay back seven and a half million. That would leave two and a half million left over. You guys have, I have a page. Page twenty, you have over thirty-five million in the bank account. Two and a half million each times, times twenty years, that cash doesn't make sense, because if we take the combined total of the thirty-five million in physical cash that you have, and the twenty-three million of due to, that would mean you guys borrowed out of the TIF more money than actually came into the TIF, which doesn't seem possible. At least that's my expectation as of right now. Once we go in more in-depth and actually find one way, yes or no, which I will come back and explain one way or another what we find, but that's what I think happened. I think you guys, what you guys did way back when was you guys paid your developers their portion of the taxes, but instead of charging it to the TIF, you charged it to the general fund. And then you took the money out of the TIF, and you should've, and gave it to the general fund, 'cause that's where you guys cut your check from, but you guys doubled it up. Instead of saying, here's the TIF expense, and then, uh, paying it out of, you guys moved it, here's it, you charged it to the general fund, and then transferred the cash out of the TIF to cover that check, which is not proper accounting.
No, 'cause, 'cause I'm ready, I'm, you, no. I'm, I'm listening to him, but my mouth is open because I'm about to bust a new one for you. In twenty seventeen, this is what I also noticed that board, board previous before me coming. Let's talk about insurance. We worried about insurance now, but they were taking money out the TIF, almost over a million to just pay health insurance, period. So you may wanna take a look into that. And the only reason why I say that, reason why I say that, Chris, is because no one up here is responsible for it. The person who was responsible for it is no longer here, or the people that were involved. But the more you dig, and for whatever reason, our Department of Justice did not prosecute. The main person who knew what they were doing downtown didn't wanna prosecute, because other towns were doing it too. But what's sad about it is that in the case of us, the person was doing it, and he intentionally knew what he was doing. He intentionally knew.
And, and, and just for, just for the record, all that was done without board approval?
Correct. It was not, it was done without board approval, and something else, that's why, that's why I always ask about the borrow, the, the, the budget itself, where the revenue, for instance, in twenty seventeen, when the board did find out, the board was supposed to stay, the board was, the, the village was at a nine million dollar expense, period, but it can only find seven point five million in revenue. Two million exactly kept coming each year out of, out of there. So I'm gonna tell you, you, you got, you're about two million off of what I know that's factual. You and I can get together, or I can give you the number to the FBI agent who told me. You know, because at the end of the day, they should, they should, and I mean, he was very upset. And two people who were, no, somebody else was in the room with me, they here right now. He'll, she'll tell you, she was in the room, it should've never happened. And he made it clear that if we get caught again, in which it probably can happen, somebody going to jail. Because it shows intent on this village, and a lot of it was done through, um, the insurance. Much of it was done insurance, the village board did not know. It did not know. So that, I'll just leave it on that. When I was shocked, I was waiting for you, my mouth was open, the mayor's correct. I was waiting for you to mention, but you didn't mention insurance. But let me also say, Blue Cross Blue Shield, it was a lot of people that should not have been covered, that was covered on the village insurance by the former village managers. And I'm saying with a S, because they knew what they were doing, and they refused, and they kept borrowing out of TIF five to cover it, and they were not telling the board. And my ma, right, and when it was trustee Rudez, he didn't know, they said it, they didn't know. They had no choice but to do what they call the, the, the blueprint that we got in twenty seventeen, when the new trustees came in. And that's why I've been asticular to say that I'm happy that we at this point, but I knew this moment was coming, that we would have revenue, but we, but we were gonna have to pay back what it's just, Chris found it. Somebody was gonna found it, find it, but Chris found it. So you say twenty, but I'm be honest, it's really, it's really twenty-two. Yeah, we don't need Lori Lightfoot, but, 'cause if Lori comes, she ain't gonna do, I'm gonna say Chris's name again, but, you know. But, but at the end of the, right.
Somebody's knocking at my door.
Right.
Somebody's ringing the bell.
But it, but the, but the actual, maybe if you can find, but the actual number that I last knew, and I'll go dig for it, I, I got it somewhere, is actually twenty-two million dollars. Yeah.
Look, trustee Brooks, he's not saying that. He's not saying that. He's saying, after they do the audit.
Right.
That we're gonna get our money back out of the TIF, that's what he's saying.
Yeah.
It's too late, right?
Right.
Okay, okay.
He said it's not recuperable.
Right, and he said twenty, but it's actually twenty-two. Now, now, it could be because, like I said, the, 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 the backbreaker of that was who, it, the light, the, the health insurance. The, this whoever the village managers were back then, and, and to my understa, I'll let, I'll, I'll let in on this one, because I don't know where it's at, but apparently there was some scheming with the health insurance.
Break it on that.
Sorry, but that's why you elect me, tell the truth. 'Cause, I mean, we have, we have to face it, that, that's, that was the truth. So who, the village manager knew that part of that, that nine million, they were actually- So who, the village manager knew that part of that, that nine million, they were actually lying. Part of that nine million, it was actually one, like a million and a half more each year that they would pay. Say for instance, you had someone, a family member that was not on the insurance, but they were not telling the board or trustees. We didn't start getting all, I'm gonna be honest, I didn't start getting any of this until, uh, Ms. Scott had came. And I, this is not me, just before y'all start, this is not me, hey, Ms. Scott, no, I'm saying that actually I would've never had to sue a village manager just to find out a bank account. She said, yeah, trustee, I understand you're on a bank account, but I'm not giving it to you. But that was the demeanor back then that the board members had encountered. So the insurance only, I bumped into that by accident. And so you might as well add two on that one that we can't recoup. So really it's twenty-two, but I'm sure you'll find it. I yield my time, mayor.
Uh, Chris, I, I have a question. So, it's me. So the audits that we've had over the past, what was the last audit that was approved, twenty nineteen?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Isn't that all of that accounted for when they did their reconciliations and they did their checks? They went through all that information to say that this is what was owed and this is what was not owed?
So what the audit does is, is they review the books to say, you have a number on the books of twenty million. Is that number accurate to your books? They do not determine, they do not go back into twenty years ago to see if twenty years ago you guys paid vendor A, B, C out of the, in TIF five out of the general fund when that should've properly, proper accounting would've said that expense should've been recorded in the TIF five. They don't do that. They just go, we're looking at this from May first to April thirtieth. You guys are saying that the balance is twenty million. Does that match to your guys' book and can you guys support that number as to how you got to it? From the standpoint of here's what the number was in the previous year, here's what the activity happens in the current year, here's the end amount. If that matches up, that's to the extent of what they do from an audit standpoint.
But they, they also, but they do, any money that comes into general funds, they look at it and account for it. And any money that gets expensed out, they account for that as well. So it's still taken into account. Any money that we receive, even if it was transferred from the TIF to the general funds, they seen that a money and then they can break it down as into what everything was spent for. So that's my, my thing is, I understand they have the information, they see what comes in and what goes out and they account for, based off of the records, they reconcile that information to come up with their audit analysis. Now I know I've, we've, I've read several of the analysis where they stated that several things were, um, they had their comments, auditors' comments and statements on what money that was supposed to be there, where did this come from? So they have accounted for a lot of this information. So that's what I'm wondering. I have not seen the auditor's comments from the previous, um, audit. And I know they do that every, um, every time they do an audit, they have their own con. And that wasn't, I have not seen that information for that nor twenty nineteen because I wasn't here, uh, during twenty nineteen, but a lot of that information should be a part of their comments. And I've read several of the auditor's comments. So I understand you're saying that a lot of this stuff, some of this might be money that belongs back because it was never um, recorded correctly, but the auditors have looked at that information based off of the records that they did have. It was several auditors. We had Lotta Bark and Aiman. Um, I, I don't have all of them down the line. I wasn't here, but I do remember several of them and Lotta Bark and Aiman was one. Oh, okay. Yeah, but I do, it was several. It was them, it was. Well, they wasn't, they was the, they supposed to be the forensic audits, so they wasn't the actual audits. I don't even know what they were, but, um, but it was Lotta Bark and Aiman that did several years of our audits. So all of that information is accounted for. So I'm kinda like wondering to say that, oh, we gotta go back twenty years when we paid auditors to do that information and they did.
So when the auditors do their work, they will look at the balances as they are in the books. If you guys accounted for it as of you guys charged it to the general fund, they will get, cause you are legally allowed to charge it to the general fund. You can pay everything and charge all your expenses to the general fund, but what that ends up happening, if you're gonna do that, then you need to do a specific way of recording for it so that you don't create this large unrealistic receivable. But what you guys did, there was two ways you could've done the accounting way back when, assuming my assumption is correct. You could've wrote the expense in the general fund and then done a transfer and entry saying that you guys permanently transferred money out of TIF five into the general fund to cover this expense. That would've eliminated the interfund and not created it as a, uh, con, a interfund the way it is currently. Or what you guys could've done was, the second option, which is what I think you guys did, was you guys recorded the expense in the general fund and then did an interfund borrow. That is an incorrect accounting because the truth of the transaction is you guys recognized the expense in the general fund and then you guys transferred money out of the TIF to pay for that check. The auditors' both methods are acceptable accounting from a accounting standard standpoint. The problem is, true transaction is you guys incurred an expense that belongs to TIF five and you guys transferred money out of TIF five to pay for it. The auditors have no obligation to say, well, the more accurate and truer version of the accounting is to say you record the expense in TIF five and then you move the cash accordingly. What you guys did, assuming my assumption is correct, that is acceptable accounting. So no auditor is gonna say that's incorrect accounting because technically it is correct accounting. It's just not true financial picture of what actually transaction occurred. To that extent.
Well, well, I just, I, I understand what you're saying. I just know that I, I've read a lot of those different reports and looked at the audits. And I know even back then, the village was, as they always used to say, at the end of the year, at beginning of the year, they were short. And so they would transfer money in from the TIF to cover everyday expenses. Not to say they were TIF expenses, they were everyday expenses, which is payroll and a lot of other expenses. And that happened year after year after year. So I understand you're saying this, that was your assumption to say that all of that is pretty much because it wasn't coded correctly, but a lot of the, you know, it was used and I have read the auditors' reports. So if you do have those auditors' reports, that would be good to look at those history. I don't know if you already have, but I've read a lot of them and they did account and say, this money needs to go back because it wasn't TIF related. So we don't wanna be just, I don't want it to be put out there that all of this money is, belongs to University Park because all of it is TIF related expenses. I just don't want that to be put out there to say that we just need to wipe it out because of it. I, you have my time.
I got one question in, in reference to that. From your experience, from county to county, does Cook County, when it comes to TIF transfers, are they different than Will County as, as far, uh, because I was hearing that that was an excuse when we had one village manager who came here and because they had worked in Cook County, they were trying to apply when you borrow from a TIF in Cook County compared to when you borrow from a TIF in Will County.
So when it comes to, so when it comes to the statutes, it does not, it's not the county, but the statutes are run by Illinois compiled statutes. That's what controls the TIF Act. Now, there are differences in the way Will County and Cook County handle the distribution of property taxes. Where in Will County, they will distribute the taxes on a set period. So you'll get, I can tell you right now when you'll get your next distributions because Will County tells you the exact days of when property taxes will be distributed. Cook County, it's whenever Cook County gets the cash, then they will, at their discretion, remit it to the local governments. That's the biggest difference I've seen between Will County and Cook County in the sense of property tax standpoint. But from a standpoint of interfund borrowing and those types of things, it all falls under the TIF Act and that's compiled statutes at Illinois level. That is not at the county level. There are some reporting differences that like Cook County has a reporting requirement. So you guys are required on the compiled statutes, unless you to, uh, annually report on what you guys expend on your TIF funds and have them audited in conjunction with your standard, standard audit. Cook County has a requirement where they wanna break down, it passed a few years back, of all expenses to pay. So if you guys, the controller, they require say, if you guys have expenses over ten thousand to a single vendor, that has to be reported separately. While Cook County has a less, uh, a lower threshold of anything that you pay out, any vendor paid. So even if it's ten dollars, you have to separately report that dollar, that vendor name. But that's a county specific type of deal, not a, uh, compiled statute. So they're more restrictive in the details that they want than what the state requires as a TIF reporting. But from a standpoint of interfund borrowing, that's all under compiled statute and standard accounting.
Okay. And I, I just wanna piggyback, I, but, um, trustee Foulter did, um, I think the first report that we did when the mayor came in, I can't remember, I think the first two audits almost related something similar to the standards that trustee Foulter, and really they all said the same thing. I begin to feel that they were repeating themselves that we needed to handle our finances, um, much better than what we were doing. Uh, meaning that, uh, we needed, um, what would be the word, procedure, maybe the procedure standards. We just didn't need someone in there transferring money, no, no accountability whatsoever. Um, and, and, but that my, that, that last report, I think that was a twenty seventeen audit that we got in twenty nineteen. Am I correct? Mayor, before that guy retired, I can't think his name. He, 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 he repeated the same thing. It's just, it, 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 it just, we were kicking us, yeah. Yeah, the older gentleman, it was during COVID, that was the last one I remember. That pretty much was almost saying the same thing you were saying. So I yield my time.
Okay, I'm gonna, unless there's other questions, I'm going to continue. Okay. Expenditures, I'm on page twelve. We have expenditures of through November thirtieth of ten point three million. We had a budget of seventeen million and last year at November twenty twenty-three, we had eight point seven million. Surplus wise, we ended the month, year to date for November with a six point eight million dollar surplus compared to the prior year surplus of two point three million. I'm gonna leave it at that unless there's any questions on the other funds. Cause I went more in depth last time I was here on those, unless you guys would like me to go in more in depth on those. Okay, any questions?
Uh, table item five one B.
So move.
Moved by Thompson, second by Lewis, all of, a roll call, Madam Plurk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote side.
Trustee McFadden.
Vote side.
Trustee Foulter.
Vote side.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote side.
Trustee Williams.
FB.
Trustee Brooks.
All right. Uh, vote side. Thank you, Madam Plurk. Now we'll move on to item five one C, which is a presentation of discussion for towing service between the village of University Park and Rogers Towing. All right, we have your documents. Mr. Rogers, Mr. Surge, you can go to the podium and, and, uh, board members, you got questions for? There he is. Mr. Rogers, just to the record, he was highly recommended by Will County Sheriff Mike Kelly. You all have a file in, in your folder, so you can take it from there.
I only have one question. I was looking at the rate for the heavy duty tow charge, which is almost like double from what the one we kinda brought in. Why is that so high? It's, it's safe, five fifty flat fee for the heavy duty tow charge.
Check the mic up, see, they can't hear you up here. You can pick it up, yeah.
So for the heavy duty tow charge, the flat fee is way higher from the previous, um, towing companies that we use. Why is it such a big difference? It's almost double.
We charge a rate of, uh, what is it? What, what was our, our fee? Six hundred?
Five fifty.
Five fifty. It's, it's, um, we usually charge two twenty-five an hour, minimum two hours. And there's, there's more that's involved with the heavy duty towing than just the regular car towing.
So he said the minimum. It, it didn't, it didn't have that here. It just say flat fee. Okay, so you said a minimal of
Two hours.
Two hours and the other one was three hundred for?
Oh, I don't know. I'm not a sportscaster.
So that was my, uh, only question.
To give you a little history, I've got thirty-five years of experience. My wife and I have been in business for twenty-five years. We've worked in and around University Park for the Will County Sheriff for the last ten years. I think there was a letter included with a recommendation from the, a, a letter of recommendation. Yeah, um, my parents actually owned a business in Park Forest. They actually towed for this village back when it was called Park Forest South. So I've, I've got some, some roots here. Um, it's been my life since I was a, a little child and, uh, it's life for us now. So, um, I currently employ, my best employee uh, is a University Park homeowner resident and, uh, he's, he's the best I've ever had in twenty-five years. He's my right-hand man. So if you have any, any questions at all.
So on, so on your, um, so on your service agreement, it talks a lot about, um, you invoicing the village. So those invoices will be for business that like police, police tow?
That, to invoice the village would be if a village vehicle breaks down and we go to tow a village vehicle. Otherwise, the, uh, person who owns the vehicle or insurance company pays the bill for an accident, arrest, whatever impoundment is necessary.
Okay, I just needed to hear that. Thank you.
We actually, we actually towed your sweet sweeper when it burned to the ground.
Want to make a comment. I had got a clar, clarity from chief. Cause I know when it come to tow services, I just wanna say to the board from experience, uh, this is something that I am glad that we are finally doing it. Um, it makes a difference when you have a, a, a police, uh, chief who, who have worked more than one municipality and understand how the operation should go. And, and he just, actually the way he explains it, I love it because, um, many towns that I worked in, we go week by week, we change them out. But this one, um, this is even better. It, it, the way he'll notify them is much faster and, um, considering that the manpower, the time these officers are down, it's good that we have a tow service, uh, especially like this when it is available. Um, so it's, you know, I just hope from here out, whether I'm here or not, that this was all, this would become standard practice from University Park from here on, that we have more than one tow service, please. Trust me, the police officers and the police chief, it, it comes a long way. I yield my time. Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and taking on this responsibility you guys meet with every two weeks. It's, it's very important to this town.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication and thank you for employing our residents.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, one more thing. Back to school parade, you can have two of my trucks for parade float.
Oh, you're awesome.
Will I be in office jail so I can ride on one?
Only God knows, my brother. Only God knows.
Let me quit playing, let me quit playing, let me quit playing, let me quit playing, let me stop, let me stop.
All right, so are there any more public comments? If not, this is the forum where we do not have any comments from the officials tonight or anything else? So, so, yeah, okay. Hurry up, Johnny on the spot. Come on now. So, so, yeah, okay. Hurry up, Johnny on the spot. Come on now. Boy, this'll be taking the record. So, so while we talking, we got the cameras. Just go to the chief and just let everybody know, since we're gonna have snow, a lot of our residents don't know where to park, when to park, when there's no parking on the streets. You know, we've got the snow plows coming. We want the public works to be as effective as possible and we need the residents to cooperate. But in order for them to cooperate, they must know the ground rules. So, thank you. That's, that's the only thing we need to talk. I think everybody wants that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Village Board and residents of University Park. So as you know, um, it's been forecasted that we're gonna have anywhere between three to six inches of snow, which can be very disruptive to travel and also your egress and ingress into town. Our very good Public Works Department will be out plowing and salting the ground, but they need your help in being able to, uh, get up and down the streets of University Park. If your vehicle is parked on the street and the snow is over two inches, you have to move your vehicle. Otherwise, you will be asked to move it or you will be ticketed and possibly towed. If you're parked on the street and your vehicle reduces the roadway where the plows can't get by, be sure the University Park Police Department will be by up, uh, will to notify you or ticket you or move your vehicle at your expense. Please, if you have the ability, park in your driveway. We will not mess with your car for, um, or if you have multiple cars parked in the driveway to allow snow plows to get down the street. We will not mess with your cars for being parked over the sidewalk. That's one of the few times where you could park across the sidewalk. Please get your cars off the street so our Public Works Department or our fire apparatus can get down the streets. As you know, the snow does pile up and it makes it hard to get down. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, uh, one, one more. Mr. Cameraman, I want you to get a camera right to the fire department. And what I want the fire chief to talk about, the importance of working smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and space heaters is very important during this time of the year.
Thank you, Mar, uh, mayor, trustees, village residents. Um, as he was just saying, make sure you do have your carbon monoxide detectors replaced every 10 years. You want them closest to your bedrooms, especially with the deep freeze that's gonna be coming next week. Uh, your furnaces are gonna be working a lot harder. So you might wanna have your furnace looked at, change your filter, kinda help with carbon monoxide. Uh, your smoke detectors last 10 years. Uh, you're supposed to change the batteries. If you have battery-operated ones twice a year, we already had the, uh, daylight savings time, so you should've changed your battery. But the newer smoke detectors don't have a battery and they are 10 years for life. Um, speaking of the snow, if you have a fire hydrant in your front yard, if you could unbury it, especially with the amount of snow that we're supposed to be getting, it'll save us time in the event that there is a fire. By digging them out, it saves our guys from going over there and having to dig them out. And that time is precious for us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll go with our public comment. One, one more last thing?
Yeah.
Residents, listen, I see you guys, a lot of people out there walking and don't have cars. But the thing about that, you guys are wearing dark colors. So if you have to walk and be out in the parkway, please wear something bright or fluorescent. Actually, I'll have some vests I'll leave at the chief's, uh, police department. If you're out there walking at nighttime, it's very, very hard to see somebody in dark clothes and we don't have enough lighting in our community. So be conscientious of that. Thanks. Go ahead, Trustee.
Also.
Yes, chief, um, we just received something from State Farm today. I don't know if this is a new, something dealing with, um, um, fire safety. It's called, it, does the name tick or tat? Tick, tick?
Tick tock.
Tick. It's supposed to be a out, you plug it into the outlet. What it does is it monitor the electrical system inside the house to prevent, in case, say, like, there's a shortage or something. It would notify you on your app as well as the, uh, the company that's monitoring it. It's for free and it prevents electrical fires inside a house. Uh, what I would do is be, next board meeting, or if, um, I just send a text and see if, I just left it. It just came today. State Farm notified me like two days ago. It's a new fire safety, uh, device. You plug, say like, for instance, we plug it right here in this wall, it would monitor every, every outlet in this, in this room. And if one outlet is default or something, that it would cause electrical fire, it would notify it through the app and then to the company. It starts, it's, it's in a yellow box. Ting! There you go. There you go. Right, have you heard of that? Right, I heard, I knew it was a ting. Calls a tick, I, I hit TikTok so much, you know, and, and Trump getting rid, or Trump may use it or I don't know. But we got ting. Not ting that you drink. No, that's tang. That's tang. Ting. So it's T-I, I'm all over the place. Let me, let me shut up, mayor.
All right, our last public comment for tonight. We'll get out of here.
One second. One second.
Yes, madam.
Yes. So seniors, disabled, uh, residents, don't forget about our snow removal program. Take advantage. Call the village. It's gonna snow heavy tonight. Please call. Chris, let him know. Uh, Mr. Vargas is over there. Call about the snow removal program. Please take advantage of that. The seniors and our disabled residents, please take advantage. It, and the veterans, and the veterans, cannot forget the veterans. All right, I yield my time.
Thank you so much. Trustee Williams?
And Ms. Shirley, you, you can call Ms. Shirley Bolden.
Don't call Chris.
Don't call. He busy. Call Shirley Bolden. She's at the village. Just call village hall.
I show them how it's done.
I just want to remind everybody about TAP. The time is winding down. If you haven't completed an application and applied, please do so. March 7th is approaching and we, out of over 2,000 homes, only had 118 to apply and even less to get approved. So y'all need to fill this out, complete it, get it mailed in as soon as possible so they can collect that sample, they come back and do a second sample and see if you qualify to get your pipe removed. This is important. We need everybody and at that, um, at the town meeting, at the church, they advised us to contest it. So I called TAP myself. They're telling me to contact Aqua for the contesting. So I talked to them. They're gonna have a manager call me back within 24 to 48 hours 'cause I'm not taking no for an answer. I want my pipe removed and replaced. And I urge everyone to do that. You all have complained about Aqua, do something about it. Fill out these forms, go online, whatever you have to do. But let's make sure that we get the pipes removed and we're gonna keep fighting to get clean, fresh water. That's my mission and I'm on it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Trustee Williams. Uh, anybody else wanna have any moments right quick, trustees? Because, you know, one thing for sure, the board members care about the residents of University Park. And in times of chaos and controversy, we need to be unified as one, as one and ensuring that all of our residents are taken care of. We're doing the very best that we can. And before Debbie Stroud come, I'm gonna take this time as the mayor to read this last, this last little quick thing and then we're gonna get out of here. So please join us for our second annual Black Success Empowerment Expo. It will be this Saturday, weather permitting, February 15th, 2025, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 90 Town Center Drive, University Park, Illinois. This opportunity will be highlighting black-owned business, successful African-Americans in the community, shopping, music, food, and guest speakers. Also, we were just recently featured on WGN as one of the black history programs in the Southland. So come, come out and see Valerie O'Neil of Burlington Northern, first female locomotive engineer, Metro's first senior train master. Come see our sister, Dr. Carla Austin, CEO, woman-owned small business, woman's business enterprise. Come and see the Keisha Mobley, the author, the propelling purpose through the pain, how I made it over. And also, the only brother on the list is Brother John Lucas, the CEO, president, step into the light. This is with partnership with the great village of Moni and it's good that we're bringing continuous new things to the village of University Park. With that, thank you so much, Ms. Deborah Stroud. Well, I thought Ms. Jenkins hoped we'd scratch her name off.
Well, no, I was leaving, but I stayed.
Okay.
Excuse me, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the village manager. We have a resident that is a senior well into her 80s. They do not have any form of heating in their home. They're struggling very bad. I, I will give you their address so you can look into that. And I also wanted to thank Chris for a thorough, thorough, I mean, we, it's no smoking guns. It's, it's, it's a good thing. Um, and we, we, you just don't know. We paid $900,000 for something that you've done for I don't know how much during one administration. So I'm just grateful for everything that you're doing for our community. And I do have some questions, um, and I'll do a sidebar because we wanted to know where did the sig, who signed off for all of this money that's been transferred from the TIF to the general fund? That was, that was our, that was a big thing. Who signature did that? Who was the person that did that or the person that did it without board approval? These are things that were like, wow. So we need to know what happened with that. Thank you and have a good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, I must say, in regards to the snow removal, um, I was very pleased with it last, last season. So I know my name's on that list again. Thank you very much. Um, there were so many figures discussed. What is the amount of the village's surplus presently? Pardon me? Was that a figure that was discussed? I heard so many figures.
There were some ball pickers, but I'll let Mr. Morebody answer that.
Figures discussed.
I, I'll let Mr. Mayor Bailey answer that craftly and smartly and intelligent to protect us.
6.8 mil. Pardon? For this fiscal. So that means up until April 30th? Okay. All right, thank you. That being the case, everybody have a great Valentine's Day and whatever other holidays that may, oh, President's Day.
Oh, yeah.
Let's enjoy this weather. Get out there and do the old-fashioned snowball fights with the kids and the grandkids.
Thank you so much. You know what?
Bring that back.
Awesome.
Everybody be safe.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stroud. So to my residents, happy Valentine, to all of our residents out there. God bless you and your families. Stay safe out there. Don't hesitate to call. If you see something, say something. Can I have a motion for a German? All in favor? Opposed? Hey, man, that thing, that was pretty darn good, man. She gonna be like.